Yeah.
Welcome to the Norton Board of Selectmen's meeting. Today is February 13th. We have three members here. Mr. Flaherty and Mr. Conway couldn't make it. Also here is Town Manager Michael Unitz. Could you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business we have is we, under licenses and permits, we have an application for a liquor license, an all alcohol liquor license, to be used at the Everett Leonard Park from Colleen Robichaud. It'll be used on June 20th, 2020. That's from 12 noon to 4:00 PM. It's for a private party of approximately 60 people. It's been signed off by the chief indicating there'll be no need for police officers. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the all alcohol liquor license for Colleen Robichaud to be used at the Everett Leonard Park on June 20th, 2020.
Second.
It has to be roll call. Renee?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
So, I'm confused by this. This is a liquor license, but it says it's liquor to be ordered dispensed. No.
Right. It's going to bring your own booze, but because it's public land, they need a liquor license.
BYOB. I approve.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Next order of business is to vote to approve local initiative program application of AR Building Company Incorporated for proposed Chapter 40B rental apartment project at 195 Massfield Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Peter Freeman, attorney for the applicant, and Jason Cambitzis from AR Builders is here, along with our engineer, Brandon Carr. So, we were here a week ago, and we appreciate your meeting again tonight. So, rather than any further explanation, I think we're happy just to see if you have questions. I think Mr. Unitz can also explain, but I'm happy to answer any questions. What we're looking for is a vote to support this as a local initiative project, which means we then go to DHCD, and they would issue, we assume, a project eligibility letter, and then we go to the ZBA, which actually permits the project. So, just briefly, that's the process, and hopefully you're satisfied with the inquiry you made since last week.
And by getting the local approval, it expedites your dealings with the Boston?
What it is, is we always try to do a friendly 40B, and there are other subsidy programs that we could easily have used, but that's where we made so much effort to meet with staff and go over things a long time ago, and keep at it, and to work with the time. So, yes, you know, I mean, the zoning board certainly acts independently, but the hope and the expectation is that they know that the selectman, the town itself, has supported it. But it still is a two-step thing, you know, the much more detailed scrutiny and the typical land use things, although, again, the town staff reaction was very positive, but we still will go through that with the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Do the members of the board have questions for any specific town employees or departments?
Yes. Which one do we want to go first?
Before they come up, I just wanted to remind the board that the department had sat with the developer and instructed the developers on what they wanted to see. We don't have final plans. You know, as the attorney said, they came last year, and the board gave them an endorsement to move forward as a friendly 40B because of the location, it wouldn't be that disruptive. The 100 units would put us over our 82 that we need to meet our 10%. So, as we do with all large projects, we had the developer come in and sit with all the department heads, so the department heads could give them directive on what they want to see when they receive the final plans. But the developers haven't moved forward yet because they want to get your letter of support, go to the state, and have the state approve the site, and then they'll develop plans that will go to the ZBA and conservation. And once those plans are approved, then they'll file the final construction plans that all the department heads will review and permit. So, right now, they've just got the concept plans that you have. That's...
Renee, who would you like to start first?
Why don't we start with Paul, if we could? Would that be okay? I feel like we're in a classroom.
[laughing]
I have, like, just a bunch of different questions. So, I read through the, I had a chance to read through the application, and a couple things when they spoke last week that I had questions on was, I thought that we had a bylaw about limiting three-story buildings. And I noticed, as I was reading, I wrote that question down last week, but I noticed as I was reading that there is a request for an increase in height on page three of the application, so I was just wondering if you could talk to that a bit.
Well, the, our bylaw, if you look at bylaw Article 6, that talks about dimensional standards, and you're right, currently, all of the zoning districts, only three stories is the highest right now that they could go. And in order to go higher, they would need to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. And then in respect to zoning too, I noticed that it was listed in here that it's actually not zoned, this type of a property is not zoned for use. Let me find the, I'll tell you what it says.
I don't recall if this site, is this site zoned commercial?
Well, that's what I was just pulling up.
It's commercial?
It is commercial, yeah. I mean, everything in here says commercial, but I was pulling it up online, too. Please.
Just, it might be helpful, not meaning to displace Paul, but without oversimplifying it, but that is why 40B is our process, because in most communities, not just Norton, the local zoning doesn't allow the multifamily housing and the density that's required to make rentals feasible. So, you're correct as to those two zoning observations, but we have to seek the relief. It's not actually a variance, which is the normal process, but it's called a waiver. And this zoning board has dealt with many projects. I've been before them, you know, myself, for other clients. And, you know, they take it very seriously, just because they are empowered to look, as much as we expect and believe that our waivers are in no way going to create adverse impacts. The zoning board absolutely takes those seriously, will get advice from your town planner, from all the other staff, and if they believe there's some adverse impact, you know, then we would have to deal with it. But that's the very purpose of our utilizing 40B, because the project, and a feasible project for multifamily housing, couldn't be done under the existing zoning requirements.
Well, in that space, right? Because isn't the one that we have on East Main Street, that's three stories, isn't it?
I believe so. And that's also zoned commercial.
So, on both, because I, and I saw the question, does the present zoning allow the proposed development? And it said no. And that's why I wanted to ask you about it, because I know we've had a lot of discussion about our zoning, things that, I don't want to say shouldn't be in there, but zones that we have changed for some reason, but yet the use of them are not in line, right, with the current zoning. So, I had a question on that. But, I mean, I have to say, like, I was concerned when you guys were presenting last week about the four stories and then going to five stories, and really thinking about, well, what's the character of the town? I fully support a 40B project, but I am concerned about that, because it's not that it's just three stories, but it's going to five, and I get it, it's back behind, you're not going to see it. But that certainly, you know, is interesting. And so, what was the process for the other one? Like, they just, they go to the planning board, and you give them the variance that they can build something that's not for that use in the commercial zone?
I'm trying to, can you restate that? I'm not sure what other, what other project do you?
Oh, the, you said that the East Main Street project, right? That it's in commercial?
Yes.
They were given a variance for that as well?
Well, they were, they went through the 40B process.
Yeah.
So, the zoning board of appeals also granted that.
Okay.
So, 40Bs give the ZBA a lot of authority. They, basically, you consolidate into them. But still, if they were, if a project, if this project triggered the state requirements for the Wetlands Protection Act, Conservation Commission would still have to act, but it's ultimately, the permit gets issued, they call it a comprehensive permit, because the zoning board of appeals will issue one comprehensive permit with everything in it. So, I wasn't here with 274, East Main was approved, but it was approved by the ZBA. And so, they can grant, you know, as their role, they can grant variances, but they also under, under 40B can grant waivers, which are different, they're kind of the same thing, but legally, they're different. But they're given a lot of authority. But you also have an ability, when an application goes to the ZBA, to comment to them. So, there'll be a public process there for comments to be issued, such as with the building height, if there are concerns with that. Because they'll still have to grant that waiver, or I guess that would be a variance in that case, but they would still have to include that in their, in their comprehensive permit.
And what are your thoughts on the height?
I haven't reviewed it enough to, you know, we had a couple meetings with them, but I don't, you know, until we get the application in, I really don't have a good sense of it at this point.
If I may, Renee?
You may.
If my memory serves me correct, the development on East Main Street, the zoning board of appeals had them lower it, because, but it was more because it was running along the road.
Mm-hmm.
And like you said, the character of the town.
Right.
But this one here, where it's out behind things, might be different. But that was their reasoning at the time about that, that project.
So, there potentially could be that we would, we would stay, like, three stories in the front and four stories in the back?
Something...
Something similar.
I'm not on the zoning board.
No, I know, but like, just the thought process.
But it's just that I do recall that they had a problem with the height on that one, but it was more because it ran right along the road.
Can I ask too, and I'm not, I'm not sure who can answer this question, but there was an item on here on page three about, the statement was that the area was, something about active development for residential. Let me, I can, I can read it. I was, it just kind of struck me by surprise when I read it, because it is zoned commercial, and I, I wasn't aware that we were. This is in respect to, on page three, item number four, under community support, it said, it mentions a master plan review process, and it says, "We're actively reviewing the potential of the subject property and the surrounding property for residential development." Is that the case? Because I didn't think that that commercial property, that we were looking to do, like, a village commercial, in any of the discussions from the master plan.
Well, yeah, and the master plan is, we're still developing it, we haven't gotten that far.
Right.
But those are issues we will be looking at, to see if...
Right. I mean, I don't remember any initial discussion on that at the meeting, like, that something along 140 would change from commercial to village commercial, too.
Right. We haven't, we haven't gotten to that, but we are having another round, March 7th, I believe, and we will be asking people to weigh in on areas where they would like to see change, and areas where they would like to keep...
Plug it.
I will.
March 7th, 9:00.
Saturday, March 7th.
Library.
At the library, 9:00 AM.
General announcement. Mary, we have to do those today.
Write it down.
Yeah, write it down. Okay. So, this, this statement is from the applicant, right? And to your knowledge, we haven't provided them with any information saying that we were looking to change that into residential development area.
Well, as you know, there was, not that specific area, but there was a rezoning nearby at, at the October town meeting. But I can't answer their, what their, why that response was written.
Okay.
But the town itself hasn't initiated anything in that area.
Yeah. And the Smith Street, I mean, we had conversation on this, too. That one, it's clearly their houses that were zoned in commercial.
Right. Those, those multifamily housing, there are mobile home parks in this area that are zoned commercial.
Is a mobile home park typically zoned, zoned commercial, or is that village commercial?
Well, in...
Not, not typical to Norton, typical to...
Actually, oftentimes, communities will have a mobile home zoning district.
I have a question about a sidewalk being added. Who would that go to? So, there was a statement in the application about a sidewalk being added?
We, at our meeting, we did tell them that if they build this project, one of their ideas for building the project here was that, and as I think they said last time, is that the residents would have access to the mall right there.
Mm-hmm.
So, we had suggested that as part of their development, they put a sidewalk from the site to the plaza.
Okay. And that's why it's in this, or was that a meeting that took place after this was submitted to us?
No, that was a meeting we had last year.
Okay. So, are there any plans on that? Would we expect to see that? Like, where the, is the sidewalk just initially intended to go from the development to, like, the, was that Great Woods Plaza?
Yes. It's a state highway, so any sidewalk work they want to do in that area, they'd have to submit to the state.
Okay.
Submit plans and have it approved.
But as part of the comprehensive permit, the ZBA can put that in as a condition. That's, that's well within their purview to be able to put a sidewalk, or if there's a, some trail connecting to, to Great Woods. They, we, you know, it's possible, but that, that's something that the ZBA can take up.
Okay.
You'd have it in a meeting.
And then, sorry, can I please?
I have a quick question. How does it go from communicating, like, oh, sidewalk sounds like a good idea, to it actually being before the ZBA? Like, how do...
Well, as part of the review process, you know, as staff, we will look at it. And in fact, we can also get a peer review done. And in fact, the state law does allow us, for the, the funding agency, to pay for that peer reviewer. So, you know, I don't want to get ahead of the ZBA, but oftentimes, when we do peer reviews, we do look at traffic. And I know when we're looking at it, I'm a big proponent of walkability, so if there's an opportunity to try to connect it, you know, especially if there's a, a good connection, I mean, a reason, you know, you know, and adding 100 and some units, you know, it's, it's likely that people will walk to the shopping center. We want it. We want to see that area, that shopping center redeveloped, and this, you know, adding a number of people there could be a great thing to it, but we need to make sure people can conveniently and safely get there. So, it's well within our rights to be able to ask that, and we would bring that up to the ZBA.
Thank you. I think that's all, that's all Paul that I had for you specifically.
Okay. You're all set, Paul?
Okay.
But don't leave, just in case.
[laughing]
Do we have somebody from the fire department?
We do.
Let's go back to the initial big question. I do feel like this is like a morning class. Next.
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for coming. We had some questions last time about whether or not there was an issue with the height of the building, and the ladder trucks, and being able to properly respond.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a concern for us, for that height.
Okay.
If you get up around 80 to 100, then that's a little different story.
80 to 100?
Feet, yeah.
Oh, I don't know that, I'd only know that...
We'll have a 100-foot ladder truck, but depending on angles and slopes, and how close you can get to the building determines how far you can put up the ladder.
So, what, what's, what's five stories?
They're proposing 62 feet. For the angles and the, and the adjacent property, they'll be able to hit it with their ladder.
Okay. And that's the existing ladder truck, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, anything, I know that you guys had asked for an additional entrance, right?
Yeah. Chief Simmons was involved before, and he asked for another entrance.
Okay.
So, and they, they submitted that.
Okay.
And other than that, they have to follow, follow NPA 13, the sprinkler regulations, and the CMIs, 527, so.
Um...
But that was our main concern, was the second entrance.
Of course. And, and there's no, so with the existing, like, this, this project or this development wouldn't require us to purchase new equipment?
No.
In any way, shape, or form?
No.
Okay. I think that was, I think that was it.
That was the, because that came up from the first one, right?
The first?
Yes.
But there was an issue with that one, wasn't there?
The other thing that we asked is that ladder truck's the longest truck, so they have to have the proper radius, so we give them the specs, and there is a road, there is a, the road that goes around the building, so that's, so that'll have to comply with the, the turning radiuses.
Okay. Does it comply as it's presented in the diagrams now?
I haven't seen anything that shows that.
Okay. So, that's a pending.
But that's something that will have to be documented and approved before we would issue a permit.
And is that specifically for the ladder truck?
The ladder truck's the longest truck, so all projects for turning radiuses, coming in off the street, and, and maneuverability in the parking lots, we use that.
I noticed in the, and I know you said you haven't seen the diagrams, I noticed in the diagram that, like, there was a, I think it said a fire hydrant was, was moved, and I'm probably not going to be able to find it now. What is, what's standard for something this size? Like...
You have to have a, so, we call it a fire, fire department connection, so the building's going to be sprinkled. So, for us to connect into the sprinkler system, we have to have what they call a fire department connection.
Okay.
And what we require is a hydrant within 100 feet.
Okay. 100 feet, just from the building, not, not...
Of, of that particular connection.
Okay.
So, obviously, if, if it's in the back of the building, certainly, the hydrant have to make sure it's within 100 of that location, not of the front or the back, but wherever that fire department connection is.
All right. That's, that's...
And those are pretty standard things that we, we always ask for in a project.
Okay. Anything else that you're aware, like, that came up as a concern?
No.
Okay.
Just a question. When you're, with the fire hookup, that's, those are dry sprinkler systems?
No, they're, they're wet.
Okay.
However, if there's overhangs on the outside, attics that aren't heated, stuff, things of that sort, then that's a dry system.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm all set, yeah. Thank you so much. Chief Clark?
I feel like I'm recording.
I know, that's what, it doesn't go, can we just have everybody up and have a conversation?
Next witness.
You're my question number three. So, we've had, and I'm bringing this more, like, discussions during the IDC, everything that we talk about in respect to bringing businesses in, like, one of the big questions is always traffic, right? So, while this is in the business, certainly, it's going to have, you know, from the density, it's going to have more people.
Mm-hmm.
Are there concerns? Because I know, you know, getting out of Roach Brothers, depending upon where you are, you have that bend, and it's, it's kind of hard to see. Like, I imagine that they have a process they have to go through for traffic management, but do you have any initial concerns based on one entrance in and out? And I know there's, like, there's an auto parts store, I think, across the street, too.
I think when it comes to, like, the ZBA area, that's when I really get involved. I haven't had much overview of this, because it's so preliminary.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's two things, really, traffic accidents and the calls for service of a 100-person unit, you know, what we're going to get. I don't see it as being a huge deal. There's a lot of cars that are coming in and out of Roach Brothers anyways. If you're talking, you know, you might get some more morning traffic or afternoon traffic, but during the day itself, you probably won't see much. If you had a unit like we have at 274 East Main, I was a little more concerned about that unit, because of, there was 300 some odd units there. We haven't seen any traffic issues there. We've had an increase in calls for service, especially the first, first year or so, but I don't expect anything that is really out of the ordinary.
And then what about service calls? Because that was my other thing. So, you know, we, we talked about the fire department, like, could the existing equipment service appropriately that space? Could you do it with your existing staffing, or, or is there a potential that because of the two big projects, that you might have additional needs in the next few years?
Well, 274, if that, is that the project you're talking about? Are you talking about the, both that and...
Like, both, both of them together, right? Because they're, they're pretty big.
Yeah. The 274, the calls for service have come down dramatically.
Okay.
You know, I think initially, we might get some, some increased calls for service. I think if you're talking about a staffing plan, that's, that's a bigger discussion, you know, especially when we talk about where we are and where we should be, it's really a bigger discussion.
Okay. Like, individually, though, the project wouldn't necessarily dictate additional staff members, but to your point, where we are, that obviously could be different.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. No other concerns?
Mr. Unitz, if you wanted to add?
Just something that might help with the service calls. 274 was sold, so there was always a question of who's in charge of that operation, and how to find people to keep control, but here, we know that they're going to own the building, so we know that we'll have somebody to deal with.
With 274, we do have a contact, we did get a contact there, and we did, you know, make some routine follow-ups, and I think that's one of the causes for the decrease. So, we would do the same thing here.
I mean, it's probably like any other housing development that we have, too, right? Just over time, things settle in?
Yeah.
So, to speak? Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Did you guys have any questions?
No.
Mike, this one, I think is, I have a question for you in respect to, there was a, a note in the paperwork that said there were waivers attached, but I couldn't find any waivers in the documentation. I didn't know what those waivers were.
I don't know if it was missing from the copy. If it was, I apologize, but what DHCD does is just, as this, part of this application, just a general idea as to the zoning waivers, such as we discussed earlier. So, the two that you mentioned, those would be waivers that are requested, and certain dimensional things. So, if it was, if it was missing, I apologize, but it's just a, you know, quick look by the agency, and, you know, certainly, that is one of the many things that the zoning board would deal with, with advice from all of these folks and anybody else in town.
Mm-hmm. What are the dimension items?
I don't know if you have anything to guide you, Brandon, more quickly.
Jason Cambitzis, AR Building. The big thing we're talking about is height, which really was dictated upon the fact that we're not touching the wetlands, so any part of that property, we, we can't even touch, in fact, we don't want to. So, it compresses the building up. And enough from our meetings before, everybody was happy for us to get to the 100 units, because it gets everybody over the line for 40B, and there's a certain level of protection. You know, I don't want to speak to us, but people felt comfortable with us doing this project. In regards to the zoning, you know, that was, that was the other one, it was the change to allow this. I would say in regards to traffic, and we just had that discussion, we've always been able to prove, when we've done projects that are commercial, and we've, we've done a few amount of rezoning, that if you take the allowed use and you compare it to our use, that the trips are actually less than what would be allowed if, if you didn't have to do the rezoning. I don't know if that matters to you at all, but the reality is, it's zoned what it is today, and I can't say for sure, but I know in other ones we've done this, there's been a less of an impact. So, that, then what could be done? So, I don't know if you have any other questions regarding that.
I do, actually, because I, I noticed in there, I saw the FEMA flood zone on there.
Mm-hmm.
So, is that part of what you had to...
Yes.
Move the building back?
Yes.
Okay. And you guys have no issues, like, should that flood zone change? I don't know if that was updated in the, the latest FEMA.
It is based on the newer maps, Brandon, I don't know if you recall, but the newer map probably came out in, what, 2017, off the 2012 map?
So, Brandon Carr from Dupree Engineering, that, that floodplain is associated with the reservoir, and I think the elevation is, like, 102. Our proposed building's up at 125-ish, so we're no, you know, our, our limited disturbance[1718.32] 125-ish. So we're no, um, you know, our, our limited disturbance is about 10 feet above the flood plain, so there's no concerns with being, you know, within that elevation.
Sure.
And just in regarding that, we talk about flood plains, we've had other projects that we're doing on the coast, and those rapidly have changed. I mean, they, they go up and up, you know, we're on the reservoir here, which is a contained amount of water.
Right.
You know, we're not talking about, you know, the oceans rising on, on here. If we do, then we've got a much bigger problem.
Yeah, exactly. We have enough water in Norton, we don't need more.
Yes, sure.
Um, can I ask you too, the, the other thing, I, I know a lot of this talked about, and, you know, we touched briefly on the sidewalk and people being able to go over to that area.
Yep.
Do you guys have any concerns with the, the grocery store that's in there now saying that they're coming out? So kind of like the, the hub of that shopping center moving?
No, really not.
Okay.
And in regards to the sidewalk, you know, we said we're happy to do a sidewalk on Mansfield Avenue. You know, we can't tie one directly into the property because we can't spell our people onto, you know, the, the supermarket. People say, if you put them in the back, well, we'd like to have an agreement with them. But the reality is, we do a sidewalk, we don't have an issue with that. We want people to have access. I also wanted to make one of our notes, and now the fire chief had brought this up, and I don't, I don't want to speak for him, but I just know, in the design, we actually use the size of the ladder truck and ran it through. We always do that, and we had no issues of, of turning it around. And of course, we're going to do that in the future, but we, we do that upfront. We take it very seriously. We know how much of an issue that can be, and we don't like surprises. We don't like people to show up and we'll be like in the last minute, oops, fire truck can't fit, we'll just turn it around. And it's not something we'd like to do, so.
I thought you actually had mentioned that, but I wasn't sure if it was based on.
Well, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to reconfirm, and, and I know the fire chief has a lot going on, so regardless of looking into that, I know he'll look at it again, but just to confirm everybody, we did run that model through there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. And on the question of waivers, I can see why you couldn't find it, but there's actually a dimensional table, which is the equivalent of the waivers on the third or fourth page of this set of plans that show the site plans. I think it's sheet, sheet four of the civil engineering. And on the top left corner, the dimensional requirements, we comply with all of the dimensional requirements, so we don't need waivers, other than the height and the stories, which we obviously discussed already. And on the parking, we also comply, I think it looks like we have a few more under the formula. It would be 160 spaces, if I'm reading properly. I'm pretty sure it's 160, not 180.
No.
But we're providing 179. So, you know, really, we actually comply, which is unusual on a 40B project, with most of the dimensional. So just wanted to point that out.
I appreciate that. So really, it's just, it's the zoning and it's the?
The use and the, and the height, the use and the height, yep.
And I would have never caught that. I was literally looking for something that said waivers when I.
Well, I, I was embarrassed because it should be included, and then I said, you know, we often put them on the plan, so thank you, they're on the plans.
Okay. Great, thank you.
My question's answered.
Yours was answered?
Yeah.
So I, I know Chris is here. I don't have any specific questions, but I'd certainly like your opinion if you've taken a look at this.
Good evening to the board. So again, these are preliminary drawings. We get much more entailed drawings later in the process after it goes through ZBA, because they might make changes. So preliminary, again, height and use are, are called right out, and we'll, we'll get much more entailed drawings further on in the process. So I think it's a, a good addition. I think it would help boost Gator Properties at 175, which has a tendency to not fill all their tenant spaces. I think this would be a boost to the area, so I'm for it.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Just, you had asked me, Brad, for some information. The current value of the property is $301,400. So their current tax bill per year is $4,460.72. So with this project, and these, these are just estimates, because we don't know what the final design's going to be, but permit fees, we'd be looking at probably in the area of $30,000. And the estimated value, if it's 15 million, the taxes would be $222,000 a year from this project.
Thank you. You else?
That's excellent. Thank you, Mike, for looking up that info.
Thank, I'll thank Denise Ellis, the assessor, for providing that information, and Chris for looking at the permit fees and.
We'll thank you guys. Denise is here, but, you know. No, I'm, I'm good. It was, it was good to have a chance to read through the material and, and, you know, having had their presentation, it certainly helped.
Yeah.
To kind of guide you through, so. I'm all set.
Eric, everyone feel comfortable to vote on this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know there's a piece of paper in here. Yeah.
Um, I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to endorse the rental housing project proposed by AR Builders, which is known as Norton Crossing, and is proposed to be located at 95 Mansfield Ave, Norton, Mass, with 100 rental units, 75 market rate, and 25 affordable, under the Department of Housing and Community Development Local Initiative Program. And with the Town Manager hereby tasked to prepare a letter of community support that, that contains the information required by the DHCD for LIP endorsement, and with the Chairman of the Board hereby duly authorized to execute the LIP letter in support for the project and forward it to the DHCD.
Second?
I, second.
Okay. Any further, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
And your questions, and we look forward to working with the board.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Now we get. We are going to move on to approve ballot questions. Good evening.
Mr. Chair, good evening.
Who do we have in front of us?
No. I'm sorry, what?
I said, who do we have in front of us?
I don't know.
Okay.
I just wanted to go over with all of you.
No, just in case there's questions.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to go over with you what's going to happen on Election Day at the middle school. Ray Cord, he is on vacation, so he couldn't be here. They're, they're going to rearrange to one-way parking, one-way in and one-way out. It's going to be a one-way. He's got his men that are going to be there, emergency management, they'll be there. They're going to be directing the traffic. It's pretty organized. If there's snow on the ground, Keith is going to plow it all out of the way because of parking to be able to park on the tennis courts and out in the back, on the lawn out back there. There's a special place for the pole workers that are going to be, um, they'll be where they tore down the building there. That'll be for the pole workers, and the school is going to provide a shuttle. So they'll be shuttling people if needed. There'll be two police officers inside, one obviously with the traffic, and one of the police officers will go outside when school closes just to monitor, to help the students cross, and people will be picking up the kids. So it's, knock on wood, I don't know if there's going to be any, any hiccups, but it's, it's pretty well.
I was getting confused. I forgot we were changing schools.
Oh, oh, okay.
I was trying to figure out the second way into the, the Yale School. Yes, Mr. Units. He's going to hate me for this, but should we do a Norton alert before, just before?
Yes.
Maybe a week before to alert people, remind them?
Wait, that it's at the middle school?
Day before.
Yeah, I was going to do that.
Day before.
Yeah.
Day before.
A week, I think a week and a day.
Yeah.
That morning might help me.
Well, I, I, I put everything I've posted on social media, I will do a paragraph, and then in the, at the end of the paragraph, I say, a reminder, all voting will now take place at the middle school. Then I do another paragraph, and then I put, a reminder, all voting at the middle school. But there's going to be one or two that'll go to the high school, I'm sure.
And, and where is the secondary parking location that they would shuttle from?
They're just, there isn't. They're probably from the back, or anybody who needs to be shuttled, that feels, that, that do not want to walk. I mean, the back, in the back on the grass is going to be a big parking area.
Oh, like where the fields typically are?
Yes.
And this is for the March primary?
This is for the March primary.
And that's Tuesday, when school's in session?
School is going to be in session. They will close school on the presidential in November.
Okay.
All right. The town, the town election is going to be on a Saturday, and then we have the primary, state primary in September, and they won't, they're not going to close school on that.
Okay. Did you, and I apologize if, if you said this, where will the teachers and staff be parking that day?
Where they park.
Okay.
I have no choice. They're going to park where they park. And they, I, I think it's going to time pretty well, because school, we always get a huge rush at seven o'clock when the polls open. There's always, there's always a line, and school there doesn't start till nine, so I think we're going to be safe there.
Okay.
And then with the next rush that comes in, like four, five o'clock, then school will be let out at three. So I think, I think our timing is, is going to be halfway decent, pretty good.
Okay.
All right.
And we're, we're voting in the gymnasium?
Yes, yes, yes.
And the access, is that, is that, like by the parking lot, is there only one way in?
There's, there's, um, yeah, there's one way. They're going in.
Side of the building.
Right, right.
Is that the side that's closest to the street?
The tennis courts?
Yes.
Coming in, that's.
They're, they're coming in and going out the same way, which is okay, because it, it will be okay. They're not going to crash into each other, or, or, because there's a, between the two doors, there's a, a bar, whatever, pillow, whatever you call it. So I'll have signs that exit only and.
Okay.
Entrance only.
I'll have, I'll have to go down there early. If I can do it, everybody can.
Everybody can?
In early voting, early voting.
Text that, or get that notification out pretty early then.
And early voting starts the 24th. It will be here at Town Hall, and it will be during, that whole week during normal business hours. So that, that's going to cut. I, I would just probably be more early voting than going to the polls anyway, because it's becoming quite popular.
Yes.
That was my, my next question. And that's going to be, is it going to?
Here, the state, the state, they don't require, but they highly recommend that you have it at your Town Hall. And not only that, but we have our state equipment here, and if there's any issues, it's good, because we're right here, we're hands-on, and we can just straighten it out right then and there.
Okay. And that's in the, like the kitchenette?
Good in the kitchen, yes.
Like you did before?
Yep.
Okay.
We had, at the last presidential, we had 3,044 early voting, and it, it went, it went well. It went, I think for the first time, it went pretty well. It was fine. It was crowded, but nobody complained.
Yeah.
No, so it went well.
I remember I came, there was nobody. I think I hung out for like 10 minutes and chatted, and nobody.
Really?
I was the only one.
Yeah. So here are the questions. Council has drawn up.
What am I, which one am I looking?
Board of Selectmen is the first one, and then the IDC, yeah.
I mean, we really wouldn't have any. Are these the only questions right now that are going to be on the?
Yeah, this is it.
About?
This is it, yeah.
It's amazing to me how long this process took, just to change a couple of names.
Well, we also, Michael and I were informed by Town Council that we have to send postcards, or we have to send a notice to every, every household that has a registered voter to notify them of these two things, so.
Two name changes.
So it will.
Maybe we should have done a change that, we didn't have to do that first.
So I'm actually waiting for council for the wording, so I can order the postcards and get them out.
Oh, so it's not specifically going to be the wording that's on here?
Probably. I don't know, to be honest with you.
These are what the ballot questions would be.
Right.
Lucia just meant what she has to send.
Right, right. And it's different? Like it's more like paraphrase to say, hey?
I don't, I don't know. We just found out, and I actually have emailed council today for the verbiage on it, and I haven't heard from her, so.
Have we ever had to do that before?
Not as long as I've been here. Not as long as I've been here.
For a name change, do we have to notify everybody?
It's a, because it's a change in charter. So, and then if you're going to change the charter again, you have to do it again.
So at least we did both of these together, so it's one notice? But still, I mean, like.
Think of the money we saved on postage.
Well, I, you know, it's funny, because we talked about this, and she said, I mean, we thought it was all very formal, that we had to do it at town meeting and then have it actually be voted on, and now we have to do notifications. So what's, what's that going to run us? Do we know?
Oh, I'm going to have to, off the top of my head, postcards. I'm, I'm thinking about the census. The census, it, the postage on a census is, is almost $3,100, but these will be cards, so it'll be cheaper. You're talking about 8,000 households, and then the printing on the cards. I, I don't, I haven't gotten any prices, because I don't know what she wants on the cards, or, you know, and I'll talk to the company once, once I hear from her, and I'll, I'll correspond with them to see the, how to do it.
Can you keep us posted on?
Of course I will.
What's going to be? And is that something with everything else going on, is that something that, is, I imagine there's probably some sort of time limit that we have to get them out, right?
Oh, God, yeah. Well, I don't, I don't know if there's a time limit for, before town meeting, but, um, town, town election, but I hope she moves fast.
Okay.
All right. We just found this out, so.
Yeah, no, I know. Is it something that you're going to, like, I guess, do we have the resources to do that? It seems like a pretty big.
We'll have to look at the budget, and we may have to do a reserve fund transfer to cover.
And then what about the people? Do we have enough people to, to turn that around in time? Or is it just, it's all, it's all with contractor, like vendor?
It would just be the vendor would print them out.
They'll send them, they'll mail them also.
Oh, they'll do everything?
Oh, yeah, they do everything.
Okay, so we just provide them with?
Yeah, we provide them with the, the language, and, and they'll, they'll handle the rest of it. We just have to move fast on paying the postage first, because they won't send it out until we pay the postage.
Okay. Well, that's one that would have been nice to note earlier.
I know.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. If, if the printing is correct, I think we have to vote to approve the questions.
I think it looks fine.
I, it seemed fine to me also. That being the case, Chair, I'm staying in motion to approve the ballot questions as printed.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Review, written warnings, in order to correct the executive office of labor and workforce development.
I'm just trying to get this out of your way.
Did you steal mine? No. Do you have a copy of it? Yeah. Can I just?
You need a copy?
This is a different, this is different.
I can go make, you want, you want another copy?
Is this the, um?
It looks like this. I'll make another.
Is this the 28-page R1?
Yeah.
Is this the one Jack specifically asked about?
It is.
Okay. Well, you guys are here, we're definitely going to hear it. Uh, did we get a scanned version of this by chance?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I sent.
We had it.
Yeah, can I?
It was sent by email. I don't need a copy.
I, no, I'll pull it up right here.
I read it, so.
Yeah.
I can put my laptop. I just want to, as they're talking, be able to.
So Chris and Chris have been reviewing the document that we received from the state and looking at different things that need to be done, and trying to find the cost estimates on those. So you want to tell us where you're at?
So, yeah, so. We sat down, the three of us, and, and the fire chief, and we, we divided up the 14 items, and we're, we're in the process of coming up with costs to mediate those right now. So we have not received all the costs at this time. We just received these a couple of weeks ago. We've just sat down with contractors, had electricians, contractors. Chris met with flooring guys.
Flooring guys. We also had the electrician, yeah, for the signage and that type of thing.
Can, can I ask, just because, you know, we've all gotten the packet and we've had a chance to look at it, can we just kind of summarize what came back to us, so that folks who may be watching have?
You want to hit all 14 points?
I think, I think a lot of them are similar, like.
Yeah, I mean, if.
Signage.
Right. If you just summarize, summarize what they are, I think it's fine. I think, because this isn't, we didn't provide this, Mike, did we? Anywhere online for people to view?
I don't think so.
Okay. So if we can just summarize, just so they, they have an idea of, of.
So.
The highlights of the repairs.
So if you start, like with the ramps and, and the signage?
Mr. Chairman, um, Mike, are there?
Mr. Chairman, um, Mike, are there, there's some of the things in there that seem to be more cleanup type of stuff, right? Yeah, so I don't think we need to.
Right.
Uh, discuss anything like that, like cleaning up the boxes or?
As you can see, Paul got rid of all the boxes.
Yeah, up there, yeah, exactly. Uh, but if, maybe, um, maybe for tonight's conversation, something, the more important, the bigger things, that's gonna cost a little bit of money and time.
Some of the, some of the bigger items are emergency exit lighting, illumination, exit signs, EBUs, emergency backup lights. We don't have any of that in these, in these buildings. Some of the bigger ticket items that you'll be hearing about is that this is a single exit, undersized egress. So that's, that's a major problem. Um, an exit stairway for an assembly room should be 44 inches. It's only 28. Should be 36 inches for a hallway. It's, again, it's only 28, no handrails, uh, no exit signs. That is a separate set of stairs, but it, there's four sets of stairs and it winds through a hallway. So the travel distance, car to ratings, fire ratings, ceiling heights, lack of sprinklers in some of it, really can't consider that an exit. Know what I want, anybody to try to work their way through an obstructed exit, um, down into the basement, um, in a case of emergency. So the fact that we're calling this an assembly room doesn't really qualify. So we're gonna try and bring it up to, to code, but it's gonna cost some money and I don't have those estimates in front of me at this time.
Are there, are there other options, Mike?
Use another room.
Yeah.
So we just go to like media center or something like that?
I think, I think ultimately, when you see the estimates, that's gonna be the discussion of where are we gonna move? Because it really makes zero sense to, the, the expense it's gonna take to modify these entrances. I mean, you could see that brick corner there, that and the structural steel that's here. I mean, redoing the whole building at that point. And then, you know, like you were saying, there's no sprinklers, you know, and that, in certain areas and the, in the, um, the lighting, um, the exit lighting, I mean, there's just, there's a lot going on. And this wheelchair lift that's been shut down by the state, I've been kinda holding off on that to find out where this sits. Because if this stage isn't gonna get used, I don't wanna spend the 6,000 to fix that wheelchair lift. So. There's more problems with the building itself. I think we should, uh, we're trying to tabulate costs to stay within this facility. Uh, you're gonna have to look at single pane windows, uh, the amount, uh, the fact that these exterior walls have no insulation in them. The fact that you're gonna need a new roof, you're gonna need a new HVAC system in here. The lack of windows and, and natural lighting within each, uh, office is also an option. Again, two sets of hallways, no exit signs. Uh, there's numerous problems with standing in this building. And I think you need to know the costs if we, if we will. I think one other thing that's not on here that I'd like to just bring up tonight is, uh, this is the first selectman's meeting and three selectmen's meetings where the heat hasn't been shut off because of a gas smell. So the last two selectmen's meetings, I had to shut the heat off because of the heat was leaking, leaking a gas smell through the building. So currently I'm looking at, the only fix for it really is to replace the rooftop unit that's sitting on this roof. It's gonna cost about 15 to 20,000 dollars to put a new one on.
Why did it just start happening?
It's old.
Just old?
Yeah. So, you know, this is kinda where we're at, you know, and the, this, I think ultimately, like we're saying, this room, I, I truly believe that the selectman should be considering a new meeting room. I don't know if we can do something with the library community room or something at the school or whatever, but this room is gonna become way too much to bring up to par.
I, I actually agree with you guys. I think, um, as we go through this report, we need to focus on the things that we absolutely need to do for employee and public safety and stuff like this, which is obviously a big ticket. I mean, there's no reason why we can't go somewhere else in town.
Exit signs, um, and the safety on the ramp, out in the hallway there.
Yeah.
Is that the one, like from the front door you mean, that?
So where the transition is between the two buildings, there's a slight incline. The front one's a little steeper than this one is. Um, I, we're getting quotes on putting them rubber matting in with the, the caution stripes on it, so you'll know that there's an incline. We've had a few people trip on those. The ramp is too steep. It doesn't mediate any standards. It's not compliant for an accessible entrance. There's many things, uh, even from the parking lot, the rear entrance, not accessible. Again, the cost to bring this building up to, is gonna cost in the millions.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we don't, we don't deny that and it's, uh, there's nobody here that doesn't think that we need a new town hall. I guess the question is, is, um, could this, so I know it can't be an assembly room, right? Like, if we determine.
I should have shut it down two years ago when I came in. And the guy before him should have shut it down.
Yes.
And the state's been involved several times.
Can it be used as something else?
It can be used as a department head, uh, but no public, no public.
So it could be like offices, right? So.
Could use it as an office at this time. That's about it.
And not to jump ahead, but, you know, Mike, we had the conversation about the falling ceiling. Like this could potentially be a place to move a couple of people, even if it's temporary, something like that.
Even if we do stay here during the construction, we're still gonna have to do exit signs, emergency lighting.
Sure, of course. Yeah. I mean, I, I think that stuff, I'm, I'm surprised that we didn't do it beforehand.
And we're probably gonna be able to patch the roof if we're gonna move forward, um, patch it and then maybe just fix the HVAC system, instead of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in bandage just to maintain this old gymnasium.
Of course. I mean, I'm, I'm looking forward to your recommendations, cause I think, you know, back to Mary's point, we, we have the responsibility to make sure that some of the basics are done with life safety, but we certainly shouldn't be spending money, especially when we have.
No, you're throwing good money at bad.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes no sense.
Right. I mean, usually we're roasting in here with the lights, so it's actually, well, it's freezing right now.
I didn't do that on purpose. It's just the way this building is. I spend my day constantly, I'm too hot, I'm too cold, I'm too hot, I'm too cold.
Yeah.
It's, it's one zone. It's one zone for all of this building and it just doesn't work. And you can't expect that to work. So we just do the best we can.
It's an upstairs, downstairs battle.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it sounds like, it sounds like my house, right?
See, they're too hot and, uh, the people down here are too cold, so we have the fans going to try and push the hot air down.
Anything that, um, anything that can be done in the immediate where it's, there's not a?
We have started, uh, the town manager instructed us to start cleaning out some of the basement. The fire load has been increased in there. And, uh, we, we are working on that. We have been working on that since, uh, OJ came out and I did the four hour walk deal with them. So, uh, those are some of the bigger items. Some of the items that were removed from, uh, on top, so it wouldn't fall. So we are, we, you know, we're not just waiting for cost estimates. We are actively proactive and moving forward.
Most of the things that are clutter, are they trash or is it?
Some of them has to be shredded, cause they're confidential. Um, some of it is, uh, just, uh, extra storage in the basement from decades and decades of use. So we're currently, we're currently working with a shredding company to pull out some of that stuff, get it out of here. Keith from Highway came over and, um, they cleaned out a lot. We still have a lot more to go, so.
Did we, do we have a contractor that we use for shredding already? We do, right, for the bins?
Yeah.
Yeah, they brought it, they brought, they brought 10 bins in.
They've been shredding 10, 10 bins for us. And we're getting more. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's a process, but they got a pickup coming next week and then another one to follow.
Okay.
So it's, it's a process, but we're getting through it.
Couldn't just burn it.
The old days, the old days, that's what I guess was done.
Well, wait, we're, we're, do we have a burn permit?
He'd love that.
Just go online and get one.
Well, you can do it online now, right?
Yeah, go online and get a burn permit.
Yep.
So, like I say, at this point, we're, uh, waiting on the cost estimates for a lot of the, you know, the.
The bigger items.
Bigger items. Uh, and we're basically doing what we can with what we have, um, at no cost for, you know, right now. And our biggest suggestion to you right now is that start considering something for this room.
I think we already did that. We're ready.
And I think you had a good idea. We should probably put this online on the town website.
Yeah.
I think, I think the biggest thing that would be an issue for moving your room is gonna be this gentleman's equipment, so.
Well, and, and that's, that's why I mentioned the media center, right? I mean, typically don't draw a big crowd, so.
Right.
I think that that's probably our best option right now.
The library is also set up at one point. I don't know if it's, uh, hooked up again. Yeah, I don't know.
We've done the library, but it's not a live feed.
It's not live.
I mean, capacity wise, it's, it, I think it would be ideal, um, but it's not a live feed. And then the media center is fine for normal meetings, right? And then if we were expecting a big crowd, we would.
Have to go to one of the schools.
Yeah, the schools.
Which we would do anyway.
Maybe we could look into making the library a live feed, um, as part of this.
Yeah.
But would that be big? Cause the second side of the media center is pretty big.
Yeah, the main side.
Can they accommodate the numerous meetings though?
I'm sorry, can they what?
Can they accommodate all the meetings?
Do they have seating too?
So you have planning board, zoning board, you have select board.
Well, I mean, you figure they record them now, right? And nothing's happening there, so I, I don't wanna say nothing's happening there. But staffing perspective, yes, I, I guess would just matter if, if there's a conflict, yeah, we'd have to talk to.
Cause we tried to have a meeting there one time.
The schedule.
And it always, always scheduled, it was.
Yeah, so you gotta understand, like, the different, was it, is this, that room could get used almost every night. The library would be good, because the front of it's set up, the lobby is set up to lock the main library and then just use those front rooms. So I would, you know, I would love using that.
That's probably an option for things like the IDC, right? Where we're not typically recorded. But I think FinCom, um, Charter Commission, Selectmen, like I think we're gonna have to do the media center or something.
Could we have, um, on our, our next, not the joint meeting, but the next regular meeting, maybe have Jason come in and see what type of scheduling is available and also if he could come up with this before the meeting, a cost to make the library live feed.
Yeah. It's been talked about, I think, in the previous contract, I think it was talked about and.
And maybe it wasn't, um, we didn't think it was feasible at the time, but comparing the, whatever the cost was now to what it would cost to fix this room, it may be relatively speaking, we might be a little bit more interested in it now.
Well, and, and we can leverage some of the equipment we have in here, right? It's just a matter of getting the live feed, so that could drop some of the costs too.
Right.
Yeah. I know. When they talk about it at the head and.
Yeah, it, it could be a huge advantage for the library down the road though, you know, even if you do get it in town hall, that, it's still a community room.
It is.
They'll have community events that you could have live.
Yeah.
And it's adjacent to the town hall, so we could, we could jump in there, so we're not talking over each other when we have meetings adjacent.
Yeah, I think that would be our best option, cause you know what? Then we control the schedule, cause we know the library's not using it every night over there, right? And, um, otherwise we're at the mercy of.
Exactly.
The, um, media center and they have outside groups using it as well. So I, I would, I would be most interested in seeing what the cost would be to fix the library. Not fix, to change, add the live feed, yeah.
Enhance it?
Enhance it, yes. It doesn't need to be fixed.
Would that be something, um, cost wise, we'd have to vote on it at a meeting?
I would think so. I, I don't know how much it is.
Well, I, I only ask because how quickly could we get it, so that if we have to call a special town meeting? Right? And, uh, but it goes back to how, how long before you guys get your?
So we, we have till March, until we could get it on a special town meeting, I, I believe, um, if we needed to do that. But we could start working on the cost immediately.
Yeah.
As far as this correction order, our, this is calling for, uh, February 28th, I believe, for everything to be completed. I'm sure we can get an extension on that, so you're not being forced out of here, but, um, you know, I think on our end, the cost estimates are gonna start flowing in next week and we'll be, you know, we'll have a better idea where we're at.
So we may want to, just as a, a backup for our meetings after the 27th, see if the media center is open? And see if we can get.
Right. I was gonna say, I was gonna say off the library, but I forgot about the cable.
Right, right. So if we can at least secure.
I think, I think at one time, the library was cabled, but then they put the, the newer cable in and the. Whatever, I, it probably was fiber. Cause I, I come, I remember when it was being, actually had metal in them. And I think, uh, when they ran that, they did not.
Who knows about that? Like Ray? Does Ray know about that stuff?
Ray, Ray would know exactly about that.
So do we have a meeting next week? We do, right? Cause this is our off night?
No.
Oh, we don't? Remember we moved it since 27?
School vacation weeks.
Oh, school vacation, yeah. Okay, so we'd have, so we're into March anyways.
Yeah, the 27th.
The 27th is joint, right?
Right.
Oh, that's right, yes.
So when are you meeting after the 27th? Would it be the next week or two weeks?
I think we should do it the next week.
March.
March 5th, yeah.
I think we need to, like, stick to our biweekly, when we, I know we tweak it, but if we can stick to that, that recurrence.
I, I'm getting too confused, just.
I know, well, that's the thing.
So the 27th and then March 5th.
Tell, tell me when I'm supposed to be here and I might show up.
And if, um, if we could have Jason to the March 5th meeting.
Yep.
Which, which we might have to go to him, Mary.
Oh, if we're out by then.
Yeah. Well, if we didn't, if they're saying by the 28th, we're, this room's done.
We're gonna ask for an extension.
Yeah.
On that. We can't possibly meet that 30 day demand.
But that doesn't mean that they don't say, we stop having meetings here, right? They can say you have an extension to finish everything, but in the interim.
Yeah.
This.
We'll have to see what they say.
So let's at least see if we can get on, on the media.
Get on their.
Yeah. Get on their calendar.
Reservations.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, um, Mike, since we're talking about the, um, the library as well, do you think maybe we could, um, have the library over here at the same night? Cause we're talking about using their space, so we should probably have them in on the conversation.
Okay.
And then the other question is, um, did you just say that if we wanted to add a live feed to the library, that was a town meeting vote, to spend that money?
Um, I don't know if, we'll have to see how much money Cable has.
To spend on it, yeah.
See if they can do it on their, with their funds.
Yeah, okay. It seems like, just surprises me that it'd be a town meeting vote for that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I was just mentioning, if it is, like, let's figure out, let's make sure it's on the special.
Because, I mean, their, Cable is an independent corporation. It really should be their expense to do that.
Cause it's their infrastructure.
Right. They're nothing, we have no.
So do we pay them?
No.
No, they would do it.
They, they, they would do it.
No, I mean, like, do we pay like a, like, are we a consumer?
You, you pay it with your cable.
They get a certain amount of it.
Yeah, Comcast, but.
Okay. So when you guys think that you'll get quotes back?
Like Mr. Zana said, we should start receiving them within the next week or so and then we should have something to present back to the board within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
If, if you guys have anything of any significance that comes back next week, we're meeting, we have a quick meeting before the, um, joint meeting next Thursday, right?
We can forward those.
You can just give it to, yeah, and then that way we can get some.
27.
The 27th, yeah.
We're doing a hearing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, um, a transfer of a liquor license.
Oh, okay.
Do we know where that's gonna be located yet? Shane was.
You know.
The liquor license? Oh, the meeting. Meeting. Shane was asking. In the library at 6:30. We're gonna meet at 6:30 and then the joint meeting will be at 7.
It'll be in the library.
So you won't have, so you won't have to move around.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure that out.
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna commit to that only because I didn't wanna take the room away from the school.
Yeah, they said we could use it at 6:30 and then, uh.
So we would have time for any update that they have at, at that time?
Yeah, the hearing should just be.
It should be quick, yeah.
It's cozy beer.
He looked at me too.
Cozy beer and wine's license being transferred to Speedway.
Do any speedways sell beer and wine?
They must. We're like the only state with a gas station that doesn't have beer and wine.
The one I'm really surprised at is Cumberland Farms is, um, looking, yeah, they're pushing into that.
I thought that they were hands off of that.
I don't remember, I don't remember any Cumberland Farms having a beer and wine license, but some of them are trying to get.
I heard, I think it was on the, uh, one of the news channels, where they're pushing a ballot question to.
Yeah.
Get rid of the beer and wine licenses.
Yeah.
And just allow it.
Wherever.
Yeah.
So they could put them in all the stores.
In grocery stores. I mean, like, it's, it's silly. That, how, does, does Roche Brothers have one now?
No, with the company within Roche Brothers.
But it's still there, right?
You guys all set with that?
It's still there.
Oh, sorry, guys.
Are you all set with us?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's there. So when Roche Brothers closes, if they don't move somewhere, like they can retain their license.
Right.
But if they move out of Nor, and then they have to, do they sell it to somebody else who might want it or, yeah?
Do they sell it or does it go back to the town?
Usually it's, usually before it comes back, yes, they sell it.
That what?
It's my pet peeve, the liquor licenses. It just gets me that, like in Boston, you saw two all time restaurants closing.
Yeah.
Because they could get more money selling their liquor license, so they closed and sold their liquor license. So Davio's could open up on the Seaport was one of them. But it, it's the only license that is handled like that. And the state limits, you can't decide how many licenses you want. You're limited by the state law and population. And then the person, instead of turning the license back to the town, they get to keep it and sell it. It's amazing.
That's what we.
I'm surprised that we, with the increase in population, that we.
They're selling their license.
Ready for another.
Well, we'll see when the census comes out.
What happens if the census comes out and it drops and our liquor licenses have to drop? Do they take one away or? What happens if the census comes out, and it drops, and our liquor licenses have to drop? Do they take one away, or?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't, they won't, I don't think they'll take any away.
No.
But.
Or they could say, well, when somebody leaves, that license is, like, forfeited.
I don't know, we'll have to check that. And when we're talking about the census, I, I know today, Lee Parker had said that people were over in the library, talking to people, they're still looking for census workers, I guess, in the area. So if anyone's interested, it's, I think it's like twenty dollars an hour or something like that, I mean.
How, how old? I have a three and a five-year-old. Can, do, is, does it have to be, like, eighteen or sixteen? Like, can, can they look at the high school, do you know?
Maybe, I don't know.
I mean, twenty bucks an hour for a high school kid's, that's pretty good money. What is, what's minimum wage, fourteen right now?
I don't know what you do as a census worker.
Yeah, what do you do? Does anybody know?
I just go and.
Knock on doors?
Yeah, knock on doors and check, you know, who lives here, and, you know, finds, finds out their age.
Like, of people who haven't filled out the form?
Probably. I would think that's what happens.
Can we get more info on that, Mike, when you ask?
You're, you're talking about, like, US census. US census, yeah. Not the town. Not the town.
So, so it's not compiled? We don't take the town census?
No.
Go roll it up to state and then do it? Well, that's super inefficient.
That would make way too much sense. Why, why would we do that?
State level doesn't trust us.
Right.
They have to do it themselves.
We might go around, knock on people's doors.
Oh, please don't.
All right, I know where you live.
Stay away. Morse Drive, we are all censored.
Okay. The only other business, unless anyone has any announcements. If not, the only other business would be minutes, and I don't know if, if we're all ready to vote on these, or maybe we should wait for a larger number of numbers.
I'm, I'm fine waiting for a larger number. Can I ask one question, though?
Sure.
Mike, a few months back, you had sent us information on the clearing of that lot adjacent to home plate. And I think Jennifer's and some stuff, and Chris Carmichael did, too.
The seat, they got a cease and desist.
Yes. Are there any updates, like?
I'll check.
Okay. Because I know, I've received a couple of resident emails on that, and, you know, it certainly, like, I, aside from the cease and desist, I don't, I don't know what authority we have or fines that are imposed. The same thing, there was one on South Washington Street, too, and I think that they're still clearing that lot as well. Can you check on that one, too?
And the one on South Washington about whereabouts proximate.
It must be in, like, the one seventy, one sixty range, I think. It's, it's not too far from one seventy-six, if I remember driving down. I wish Chris was here, he would know it, because he remembers all that stuff. But I think he actually talked about that one here, one night.
Was it one of the?
The one with the FedEx trucks out?
It's the one where they were actually digging out, and they were clearing the land, and, yeah, there's a bunch of trucks. I think there's some buses back there. There's the big crate metals, like, what you put on the semi.
I know it, I'll get an update from Chris.
And then the home plate one was, they had the, like, where the parking lot is, there was a big wooded area, and they have completely removed it.
See, I'd probably drive right by, and didn't even notice it.